Okay, good evening and welcome to the Select Board meeting for Monday, December 2nd, 2024. I am Eric Eldridge, the Select Board Chair. The following meeting is being recorded and broadcast by Tingsboro Media. The meeting is available through our local cable access channels on Xfinity and Verizon FiOS and is a live stream on our website, www.tingsbrowma.gov. A recording of this meeting will be available through the video on demand portion of our website. Open meeting laws require that any member of the audience who intends on recording either video or audio, so declare that now. Seeing none. For those who are here, there is an exit directly across from me at the rear of the room and one to my left. With that, I would like to add, all of those who can stand, please rise for the Pledge of Allegiance. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice as our own. Thank you. And I will start with Board introductions. Why don't we start to my right this time? Change it up on us.
Catherine Foster, Assistant Town Manager.
Good evening, Colin Loizell, Town Manager.
Good evening, Ron Cohen.
Good evening, Jackie Gilfus.
Good evening, Ron Schneider.
Good evening, Mike Moran.
Good evening, Jaclyn Schnacker, Executive Assistant.
Okay, we're going to do things a little bit out of order from an agenda standpoint. Why don't we start with Citizen and Business Time? Are there any citizens who wish to address the Board about any items that are not on the agenda? Seeing none. Why don't we, why don't we go to the Town Managers' Report? And then we can hop into the meeting minutes and the rest of the items. I'll give you a chance to get some.
You've got it. All right, so I want to just start with a budget update. As the Board is well aware, the town's $1 million contribution to the middle school debt will come online in its entirety in fiscal year '26, which is the budget we're preparing. I've been working with our Finance Director to track our progress toward realizing that full new growth since we closed the last budget cycle. As of today, it does not look like we're on track to reach the full new growth from Toll Brothers this fiscal year. There's a variety of factors that play into that. The good news is, the $1 million that we assumed would be the new growth came from estimates that we did back in 2020 and 2021. Since then, the value of the units have gone up. So even though we won't have all of those buildings on our new growth for June 30th of this coming calendar year 2025, the increase in value is helping us get there. So with that said, we are on track to meet our contribution as planned. Our latest budget scenario assumes largely level funded, not level service. Obviously, level service, the money goes up. Right now, we're assuming a worst-case scenario, and so just level funding. In expense lines, except for a major area such as trash and health insurance, our scenario that we're working off right now assumes a worst-case scenario for trash. For those that aren't familiar, our trash contract goes up either the Consumer Price Index or a maximum of 5%. In September of this year, the CPI for that was 4.8%. So we're assuming a worst-case scenario, hoping that by the time our contract comes up for renewal, it's not as bad. Same thing in health insurance. Every year, we get alarming news from the insurance company that it's going to go up dramatically. We've done well in the last couple of years, but everybody is seeing these spikes. And I expect that fiscal '26 will be a bigger increase than fiscal '25. That said, we're still assuming a worst-case scenario. Fortunately, all but one of our general government collective bargaining agreements have already been finalized, and we know that the fiscal year '26 budget increase for the school department will be 2.7% over last year. So there's not really a lot of remaining unknown variables, which has really helped us project. That said, in order to level fund expenses and meet that contribution, based on our early conservative projections for state aid and revenue, we're looking at falling short by just about $100,000. However, remember that year over year, we've increased our general fund contributions to the road program. Last year, we funded that at $300,000. With the new monies totaling more than $250,000 from the Fair Share Amendment, which was money that we didn't have until last year, as well as the certainty that a second marijuana establishment will come online in fiscal '26, we are fully confident that we would be able to reduce the general fund contribution, but increase the money that's going into the road program from those two different sources, thus meaning that there wouldn't really be an impact on what we're planning. I've had a couple of meetings now with our Finance Director and our DPW Superintendent, and based on what is already planned for fiscal '26, this strategy won't impact what we are already planned and designed to do. So that's positive. To be clear, I'm not saying today that we're going to need to cut our general fund contribution. The budget that we're working off of includes the $300,000. But I just want to set expectations early on. Department budget requests are due on December 10th, and following that, we'll be meeting with every department to make sure that we're fully, you know, identifying areas we can save money, not just because it's a good practice, but because this will be a bit of a tougher year. There are some really positive things on the horizon. I expect that fiscal years '27 and '28 will be much better in the area of new growth because I expect at least one of the new warehouse buildings that's part of that Mass Works project to come online. And I'm hoping any day now, we see an application for the continuing care and assisted living facility that was, the zoning amendment that was changed at the last town meeting. So this is really not a bad situation to be in. And obviously, as we get all of our budget requests in on the 10th, in my Town Manager's Report for December 16th, I can provide a little bit more. But I know that this is something that this Board has been adamant on us maintaining our commitment on, and certainly, we've been focusing on it as well. So I wanted to share what is really, at the end of the day, a positive update on the budget front. My office is aware that there were substantial traffic and road safety issues that occurred this weekend at Nature's Remedy. The Tingsboro Police Department and our Department of Public Works were dispatched at different times to help address these issues, and I know that we had details for much of that time. I'm meeting tomorrow morning with the Police Department to identify the steps moving forward, and we'll convene a meeting with Nature's Remedy in short order to discuss them with Nature's Remedy. Depending on those conversations, it may be wise to invite Nature's Remedy in for a hearing on those matters. If we go that route, we have to give them a certain amount of time notice, so you'd likely be looking at your first January meeting. But in the meantime, I'll provide an update to this Board to let you know the steps that we're taking. Residents, if they encounter traffic issues or other situations over there, should report them to the Police Department. But certainly, if they're non-emergent, they can let our Office know so that we can track them and adequately take care of these expenses. All the details that we had to issue will be paid for by Nature's Remedy. We've prepared an invoice for them for the call-out of our Department of Public Works, so fortunately, they'll be on the hook financially as allowable under the Cannabis Control Commission's regulations and our host community agreement. If you've driven down Kendall Road recently, you've probably seen that what will soon be Commerce Way has been cleared. This new road will provide access to the town's DPW yard, the MassDOT Park and Ride, and a new warehouse development on the Brock's property directly behind the Park and Ride. As a reminder, this project is being supported by a $2 million Mass Works grant, and all of the work that exceeds that $2 million threshold is being paid for by the private developer. Last year, the town joined the Northern Middlesex Council of Government's Regional Ceiler of Waits and Measures Program. The program saw turnover this year, and as a result, NIMCOG has discontinued it. Fortunately, we were able to quickly pivot and have since contracted with the Department of Standards with the state to provide those services here in Tingsboro. They'll begin conducting our annual weight inspections in January, and will be available to assist new businesses and investigate complaints against businesses in Tingsboro. The fee that they're going to charge us is actually less than what NIMCOG was charging us, so our rates are still on par, and it's not going to cost the town anything. Work to identify an appropriate parcel for a new fire and police station is ongoing. The group designated to identify the best parcel for each is meeting tomorrow to review the existing options. Using feedback from the final report of the Public Safety Building Study Committee and including other lots that we think would work, we've originally identified 13 parcels for consideration. After a preliminary review of various factors, I'm recommending that five of those parcels advance for further consideration, and we have a list of to-do items on all those parcels to make sure that they work. Two of the parcels are municipally owned, and each one of those, I believe, is a uniquely suitable site for either a police or a fire station. So we very well could be looking at land that wouldn't cost us anything to acquire. So tomorrow, we'll begin our deep dive, and I've already talked about these efforts with LaVallee Brenzinger, who did the last report on these buildings, and they're ready to help us do some high-level test designs, just to make sure that, you know, turning radius is okay and there's no other environmental or zoning considerations that we have to make. The Tingsboro Public Library will host their annual holiday party on Wednesday, December 4th, from 4:00 to 7:00 here in the library. All are welcome to attend. The Festival of Trees kicked off this weekend, and as always, has proven to be bigger and better than prior years. The festivities continue this weekend for its final weekend of the year. Residents should visit tingsbrowma.gov for the full schedule. And as always, just a big shout-out to our Rec. Director Allison Page and the entire committee and group of volunteers who put so much work into making this program a success every year. And also, the local businesses that donate trees. All of our town departments have trees over there, so cast your vote because the Highway Department typically wins, and they're in a close battle with the Inspection Services folks. So there's a lot at stake here. The town will release a request for proposals on Wednesday, December 11th, for lease agreements to install solar on the Town Hall and the Center for Active Living. The town is seeking cash lease agreements whereby the proposer would install and maintain a solar array at their own expense on each building and pay a monthly lease to the town. We had explored a system whereby the town would generate electricity credits, but as you all are probably aware, we're part of the Charles George Landfill Solar Farm, and we are contractually obligated to buy X number of credits from them. So I didn't feel like it was wise for us to take on an additional burden of credits. We'll take the money instead. After meeting with various solar vendors, it was determined that the cash lease arrangement was most advantageous based on our situation. Proposals will be due on January 15th, and we'll award a contract to the firm that offers the most advantageous lease and has the experience providing these types of arrays. There is a very slight possibility that a change, a recent change in law would require a town meeting would approve this in May. If that's the case, the contract will be effective July 1st. And that's largely because we're looking at a 20-year lease. The solar companies won't invest money for just a five-year lease. And just a reminder that the town will once again participate in wreaths across America thanks to the work of Pam Russell and the Tingsboro Firefighters Association. The event will take place on December 14th, beginning at 11:00 a.m. in the town center. You can learn more and sign up to volunteer and sponsor a wreath by visiting the link in the Town Manager's Report. It's also a news story on tingsbrowma.gov because that is a long link for me to read for everyone. That's all I've got, Mr. Chair.
You want to go through that full link? Come on.
I think people will lose it after I say WWW.
Okay, Kat?
The town is formally seeking feedback on how we should use the opioid settlement funds that the town was awarded as part of the national lawsuit against opioid manufacturers and distributors. Residents can find a link to the survey and more information by visiting tingsbrowma.gov. The survey is live, so that's shorter than yours. The survey is live now and will run until the end of January. A big thanks to Resident Patrick Latham, who assisted several residents again this fall, transporting their fallen leaves to the yardway site. As a reminder, if residents have trouble transporting their yard waste to the site off Bryant Lane, please contact the Town Manager's Office so we can coordinate with one of our many amazing volunteers. Currently, we plan to keep the site open until probably the first snowfall, would you say? And lastly, the town will release an invitation for bid on Wednesday, December 4th, for cleaning services at the Old Town Hall and First Parish Meeting House. The bids will be due on December 18th. And that's all I have.
Excellent, thank you. I will open it up to the Board for questions and comments. Why don't we start with Mr. Moran?
I don't have any questions, so thank you.
No questions?
No questions.
No questions, but I would just like to thank Colin and the Finance Director for going through the budget. I think it's very important that we be as transparent as possible and as much, give residents as much time as possible to understand some of the things that we're going through as it relates to the budget. You know, transparency is one of the things we've talked about many times, and I think this is good that he went through this. You know, the $1 million contribution, you know, we really wanted to reduce the tax impact to the residents. We knew the $1 million would probably make this a tough budget year, and luckily, we have Colin decided to volunteer to be Town Manager and take on that responsibility. But it is something that, it does take a lot of work to make that happen. You know, as you've seen in some of his other updates, you know, we're looking at new revenues from the solar farm. You know, you hear this Board almost every meeting talk about efficiencies and how we can reduce the operational budget. And in these times when you're going to have a tough, you know, a tight budget year, actually we'd call it, that's when this is very, very important. You know, as you can see, other towns, a lot of other towns are going for two and a half operational overrides, and you know, if they're not, you hear, well, maybe the next year or two they are, but you know, we've been, Colin, Finance Director, have done a really good job of keeping tight rein, you know, on the budget, and I'm really glad that he gave this detailed update to the residents. Thank you.
Yeah, and just to add on that, because just so that people are aware, when we did the initial plan and we looked at the numbers, we did projections. We looked at what the revenue was going to be. We looked at, and we knew that the first, probably few years of the school debt was going to be tough, which is one of the reasons why we advocated for putting money into debt Some residents didn't like how that was going to happen at town meeting, and so we're going to have to deal with some of those things, just because we need to deal with, you know, that smoothing of the impact, because we know revenue will go up over time, but you know, you've got to get through some of these. So, one, I'm glad that we're revisiting that. Two, I really like that we're doing it early. We're going to have to go through a bunch of different options on this. We will look at all options, and we want to make sure that we're balancing all the services across the town. You know, you sit there and say, we looked at the pie chart, right? And you say, okay, where do I want to take away? Well, we don't want to take away from anywhere, right? We need public safety. We need the roads. We need the schools. We need the services that residents require. So it's good that we're looking at those options. I appreciate the efforts. I know there's going to be a lot more, both from work standpoint and communications out to residents. Just to clarify, on the traffic at Nature's Remedy, if they call the Police Department, we want them to use the regular business line.
Correct.
Unless it's an emergency.
Absolutely.
So that number is 978-649-7504. It is online. There's a variety of those things. Please don't call 911 for traffic issues at Nature's Remedy. Anybody else have anything? I know I went through some things quickly, but with that, I guess we'll continue on with our modified agenda, and what I'd like to do is if we can go through the meeting minutes, get those done.
Mr. Chair, I move that we approve the regular session meeting minutes for November 18th, 2024.
Second.
I have a motion and a second. Any further discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Abstain?
Abstain.
That carries 401.
Mr. Chair, I move that we approve but not release the executive session meeting minutes for November 18th, 2024.
Second.
I have a motion and a second. Any further discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Abstain?
Abstain also.
That carries 302. Okay, now I'd like to jump down to the public hearings. This is 5F. This is a public hearing for the transfer of a liquor license, Tingsboro Liquors, 24 Middlesex Road.
Mr.
She can give the background, and then we'll open the public hearing, if that's okay.
Included in your packet this evening is an application for the transfer of off-premises package store all alcohol liquor license for Tingsboro Liquors, 24 Middlesex Road. The application seeks to transfer from Nahama Inc. with Parth Patel as manager to Vershka Verakesh Corporation with Rajvi Patel as the manager. As part of the transfer, the application is requesting a pledge of inventory and license and a change of hours. The application is complete and all fees have been paid. The requested hours of operation are Monday through Saturday, 8:00 a.m. to 11:00 p.m., and Sunday, 10:00 a.m. to 11:00 p.m. This is the maximum allowed. The current hours are weekdays 9 to 9:00 and Saturday, 9 to 11:00, Sunday, 12 to 7:00 p.m. A request for comment was sent to all departments having jurisdiction, and there were no adverse comments. The Board of Health did note that the new owner will have to apply for food, dumpster, and tobacco permits with the Board of Health, and that's all.
Thank you. Now, I think we can open our.
Mr. Chair, I move the Select Board open the public hearing and waive the reading of the hearing notice and the legal ad.
Second.
I motion any second. Any further discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
What? We don't do a roll call for opening a public hearing? No?
Aye.
All those in favor?
In favor.
Aye.
Opposed? Abstain? Carries 500. Public hearing is open. I understand that the applicant is here in council. If you could introduce yourself, and we'll let you weigh in on anything that Jackie did not cover.
Cover most of it. Good evening, my name's Attorney John Meradian. Democas Law Offices. With me is Rajvi Patel. Tonight, we're seeking approval of the transfer of the Section 15 All Alcohol Package Store License to Virash Corporation. We're under agreement to purchase the business, and we're seeking a transfer of the license, approval of Rajvi Patel's manager of record, approval, pledge of the license, and inventory to Rockland Trust Company as they're financing the transaction. And lastly, a change of hours to 8:00 a.m. to 11:00 p.m. Monday through Saturday, and then 10:00 a.m. to 11:00 p.m. on Sundays, which are the maximum allowed by statute. This is a change in business ownership. There's no change of the store footprint or anything like that. Rajvi is tip-certified in alcohol safety training. They'll have two to three employees between part-time and full-time, will also be tip-certified, and they will use an ID point-of-sale scanner system to help combat underage alcohol sales. Rajvi has experience working in a convenience store selling beer and wine, so he's familiar with the rules that go with that. Other than that, there's no changes. It's just a change in business ownership. It's still going to remain a liquor store, and then we will get the Board of Health permits when we get closer to the closing date. Takes the ABCC about six to eight weeks to approve these, so once we're closer to closing in January, February, we'll get those before the license gets issued.
Excellent, thank you. I will open it up to the Board for questions. I don't, is anybody from the public here wish to weigh in? Seeing none, I'll open it up to the Board. Mr. Moran, any questions?
Seems the application's in order, and it's just a business-as-usual transfer of license, so I don't really have any questions pertaining to that. I wish you well in the business.
No particular questions, so I'm just glad that the owners are, you know, tip-certified, are experienced in this business. Same thing, wish you well.
Select person Gilfus.
Hello, I just had a couple of questions. With the change of hours, is the intent to change the hours, or is it just to have the ability to change the hours?
Have the ability, change the hours, and stay open and see how business goes, and stay with parameters, obviously, from what's allowed by law.
Beautiful. And I would love to just hear more about you, if you want to talk about yourself and why Tingsboro? Why do you want to be here when you could be anywhere?
My family lives here, so we move here.
Wonderful. Yeah, just looking forward to having you. I live right down the street, so I'll drop by.
Very straightforward. I just wish you the best. Hopefully, you're there an awful long time.
Yeah, no questions. Again, thank you for coming in. Wish you success. I hope that the transfer with the ABCC goes smoothly. It isn't always that way. But yeah, no, I have no further questions, so with that, I guess we can close the public hearing?
Mr. Chair, I move the Select Board close the public hearing.
Second.
I have a motion and a second. Any further discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Abstain? That carries 500. Any further deliberations? Does anybody have any? Transfer? Then I will entertain a motion.
Oh, boy. Caught me on that one.
Sorry.
I never read here, do you?
I got it.
Got it, right at the beginning.
Mr. Chair, I move the Select Board authorize a lottery system to fill. That's not it.
There you go.
Show it to me. I didn't click off into that section yet. Mr. Chair, I move the Select Board approve the transfer of the off-premise all alcohol package store license from, oh, boy, Nima Inc. into Virish Corporation and change of manager from Parth Patel to Raj Patel, along with a pledge of inventory and license and change of hours to Monday through Saturday, 8:00 a.m. to 11:00 p.m., and Sunday, 10:00 a.m. to 11:00 p.m. as presented.
Second.
Thank you. Any further discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Abstain? That carries 500. Congratulations.
Thank you so much.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Cheers. Okay. Now, make sure I don't miss any of these things on the agenda, because running around. We're going to go back to 5A. Fiscal year '26 senior tax work-off appointments. Who has that one?
I'll take that.
Kat, please.
Great. I'm pleased to report that we received 21 applications for the FY '26 senior tax work-off program this year, which is the most that programs received to date. For the upcoming year, the Board of Assessors approved 18, including three new positions, giving priority to those who have financial hardship. Of the applicants, five were new and 12 qualified for the financial hardship. Since this Board has been, has previously adopted a policy that gives priority to applicants with financial hardship, those applicants will be automatically appointed. For the remaining applicants who do not qualify under that priority, we have decided in consultation with the Board of Assessors that a lottery is the fairest way to fill the remaining slots. To that end, we will conduct a public lottery on Wednesday, December 4th, at 9:00 a.m. Town Hall. We'll be in the kitchen. Participants have already been notified and encouraged to attend, and we are seeking the Select Board's blessing on this plan this evening. Just so once appointed, participants will be connected with their supervisor's schedule and can be working on January 2nd. And then as a reminder, applicants will be eligible for a property tax abatement of up to $1,500 if they complete 115 hours of work in their applicable department. And we do want to just thank everyone for applying and encourage those who have not been selected to apply for the program next year, which will be, you'll be able to reapply in the fall of 2025. And for those who are interested in learning more about the program, they can contact our Office with a number and email address listed in the packet.
Excellent, thank you. Let me open it up to the Board for questions. Mr. Moran?
I think it's a wonderful program, so I'm good.
Is there a hard ceiling as to the number of people that we can allow into the program?
Yes.
Yeah, part of the yes and no, it's self-imposed. The Board of Assessors has to vote every year how much to release in the program. So yes, the town could amend the program on a yearly basis to say, reduce the amount of the qualifying abatement so that more people can participate, but everybody gets less. That, that's a less favorable route because it doesn't provide that level of predictability that our current policy has.
Okay, so the cap that we put on is a self-imposed cap, right?
Yeah, it's certainly not arbitrary. The assessors have a formula they use based on the real estate calculations and what kind of flexibility they have, but it is a cap that we impose, which is why Kat and Jackie were able to work with the assessors to increase that amount by three new positions this year.
And what's the cost to the town of more or less lost tax revenue by doing this?
The full amount, so if you had $1,500 per person.
$27,000.
The thing is, there's a little bit of flexibility within the way the assessors calculate everything, so this is kind of, what they do is figure out how much the town can afford without actually impacting our projected real estate collections.
Okay, thank you. Thank you for asking that, because I had the same question.
Read your mind.
Much appreciated. Select person Gilfus.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Yeah, I think it was sort of the same line of thinking. So 18 positions times $1,500 is $27,000. 18 positions times $1,500 is $27,000. So, I mean, if we're assuming the maximum, that's what, that's the assumption of what we're losing. But it, you know, it works itself out differently than that. The number of positions and number of people who applied, so there's 21 applicants, five were new, 12 qualified for the financial hardship priority, and there's 18 positions. So is it the 21 people are going for the 18 positions? What's going into the lottery?
Nine. Nine people.
No, how does that not count?
I mean, sorry. No, 12, but nine will be selected. For the, nine is the vacant positions after we've already placed the 12. No, wait, I'm sorry. I'm confusing.
So it's 18 positions, 12 have already been filled, the remaining six are being filled by however, whatever the delta is of that.
Out of nine.
Out of nine.
There's 12 that have been placed based on financial hardship as giving the highest priority.
So the difference between 12 and 21 is nine. I love it. So three, three people who have applied will not receive this opportunity. Those three people, whoever they may be, should consider applying next year. Got it. Thank you.
Sorry.
Nope, it's all good.
And one thing I just want to highlight for the board is that the program fortunately is working exactly the way, this board actually, three years ago, contemplated this issue. With the assessors, we calculated that every year there was more interest, and this was originally adopted by the town in order to provide relief that was necessary for seniors. It became a really great outlet for seniors to stay involved with local government. There was some money at the end off their taxes, but it was really a way to get them out of the house. And so, three, it might even be four years ago now, this board contemplated, well, as great as that is, we need to remember that this was designed to help specific people with financial hardships, and so that's exactly what's happening here. Kat mentioned the 12 that qualified for it, so they've submitted documentation to the assessors' office that they're below the income threshold, and, you know, we've guaranteed that they're going to get that money. It's a good problem to have, really.
That's great. Thank you.
One of my favorite programs, I say that every year, but a special shout-out to Grace Anne. She's pretty much the one that started this. She went to a select board member, but she did all the work, and pretty much pushed this through. I think this is a great program. You know, wish we could even expand a little bit more, but I understand the limitations. But, you know, I think the number of hours is what we should keep, because I do know that a lot of people that do volunteer for this work many more hours than what's here. So I'd at least like to keep the hours that they have and not reduce those.
Thank you.
Thank you. Yeah, just to echo, I think that this is a fantastic program. We have talked about this in past years. I'm glad that we were able to expand it. I look forward to the Board of Assessors, who are very thoughtful in how they look at these, and that will continue. I'd love to have it such that this helps all of those people who are in need and provides an opportunity for those who would like to continue to help out the town. I mean, it's, yeah, it's, there's an abatement, but let's not, this is not a handout. This is something where we're getting significant benefit. And, you know, these folks do a lot of, as Mr. Cohane said, they're putting in a lot of hours and they are helping out a lot. So I think it's a fantastic program, has benefits. I appreciate the work that's been done. I do also look forward for, you know, the town manager's office and the Board of Assessors to continue to look and see how we might ensure that all of those who have a need can get the opportunity. I think this is as fair as you can get, lottery systems, so I'm, it's, I don't want to say it's a good problem to have, because you don't want to have anybody with financial hardship. However, that there's enough demand on this program that, you know, we can fill all of these spots. So I'm in favor of what you're doing, have been doing, what this plan is, and I look forward to seeing how it continues to grow in the future.
Mr. Chair, if I could do one more question?
Yes, sure.
What type of work do the seniors do? Like, what kind of projects do they do?
Certainly. So it varies. A lot of it is scan and digitizing docu, files. There's a significant amount of positions at the Center for Active Living, some greeter, helping out with, in the kitchen, tasks like that. The three new positions are, one, working with the recreation department, one would be working with the media department, and I believe the other one was, Jackie, correct me if I'm wrong, was that added to the Center for Active Living?
I'm not sure if it was Center for Active Living. I know there was, just, a lot of people have a lot of needs, so I don't know if there's been a decision made on exactly where that's going to go. It's going to depend on their skill set.
That reminds me. Last year, it was probably, Mr. Schneider's looking at me, so it was probably Mr. Schneider's asked the question of, it would be nice to actually have this program into the schools also. And I remember talking about it, but I never really heard back. Do we check with the school department to see if they would be willing to take a senior? It would have to be next year, of course, now, I guess.
We, we have in the past, a few years ago, there's, it's a lot easier for us to put somebody in a town department. There's less core requirements. We could certainly see if the school needed something. The reality is, we haven't had people that we didn't need.
Right.
So we've been barely filling needs. The good thing is that they, we often share, so they'll finish a project. You know, Kat mentioned that they do digitizing. I would say probably 80% of our participants are scanning and organizing digital files. And so we share across departments. Inspection will usually gets two or three, but they help all the departments. They've helped us. So we can certainly see if the school's new, and I know it's just a little bit more complicated then.
Yeah.
I wonder if there's an opportunity to hear from some folks that have participated in the program in the past, that might want to share their experiences, either, you know, a blog post on the website, or something through Tingsborough Media with, you know, a video from Rony. Just if, if people feel like they're getting a value out of this that is not just the financial value, but I think we're talking about, like, how life-giving this work can be for folks, and getting them out, and connecting with folks, and thinking about, like, the digitizing and doing things that maybe they wouldn't be otherwise doing at home, or like, learning new skills, or, you know, I would just love to hear from people if this work is meaningful for them.
Absolutely.
Mr. Chair, can I have one more?
Absolutely.
One more question, comment, whatever you want to call it. This is a senior tax work-off program. I am imagining there are a number of residents in the town that are not seniors that are facing severe financial hardship. Is there any thought towards expanding this type of program, or maybe setting aside a certain number of slots for non-seniors?
So the program, as is, comes from us adopting a piece of legislation that deals with senior tax work-off. We could certainly explore with counsel, if we have the ability on the local level, to create our own program that extends beyond seniors. Ultimately, I think the answer would be that it would have to come out of that same pot of money that the assessors are currently releasing.
Right.
So I don't think it's impossible. I just think it isn't as simple, because we specifically adopted a section of state law that deals with senior tax work-off.
No, I'm just trying to be sensitive to other folks that are, that are facing financial difficulties within the town, and if there's anything that we can do to help them.
To that end, I would just remind folks that our assessors' office meets regularly with people in similar situations. Oftentimes, people don't even realize the abatements or the exemptions that they qualify for, and so certainly, anybody who finds himself in doubt about that should just call our assessors' office or stop in, and they can go through your individual personalized situation to say, hey, you qualify for this exemption or this abatement, which, you know, can help to some degree.
That's great. Thank you.
Of course.
Anybody else?
None.
All right. With that, I guess I will entertain a motion.
Mr. Chair, I move the select board to authorize a lottery system to fill the nine financial hardship positions for the FY 26 senior tax off, senior tax work-off program.
Second.
Motion in a second. Any further discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Abstain? Carries 5-0-0. Okay. 2025 liquor license approvals.
And y'all don't have to sign them.
Woo!
This evening, we're asking the board to renew the town's 27 on-premises and six off-premise retail liquor licenses. These licenses are subject to annual renewal in the same way that the local licenses the board recently addressed are. It should be noted that Tex-Mex Mini-Mart has closed and therefore is not seeking renewal. The total fees collected for these licenses was $86,000. All of these renewals are contingent on our tax office confirming tax compliance and receipt of any missing documents and/or fees.
Okay, open it up for the board for questions. Mr. Cohane, you can start, because I saw you saying no questions.
No questions.
Select person Gilfus.
More, just a comment. I think it's really impressive that only one of the businesses has closed in the last year and is not seeking renewal. I think that that speaks to the economic stability in town, and the fact that all of these other licenses are still being renewed, that people want to stay in Tingsborough. And I know that there were some new ones added this year, so I think it's great.
Fantastic. Thank you.
No questions, Mr. Chair?
Mr. Merian?
I think it's fantastic. I think, Colin, there's a inventory of licenses that are still available. Maybe this is a marketing opportunity to say, hey, we have this many off-premise and this many, I guess, all-alcohol for restaurants or those types, on-premise?
Very sad advertising moment. If you're looking for an on-premise all-alcohol, we currently don't have any. We are, of course, waiting on the legislature to approve our three on-premise all-alcohol, which they very generously restricted to Middlesex Road and Westford Road. I'm not salty about it. We do, however, to Mr. Merian's point, have three or four off-premise wine and malt licenses available. Those are, of course, sought less frequently. We do have one or two on-premise wine and malt licenses, so that's for a business that would only sell beer and wine. And our office or the Planning and Economic Development Office can help folks start that process.
Thank you. Good question. I have no, no questions. I'm thankful that we don't have to sign all of these by hand, but it is good to see that the businesses are still continuing and thriving. Look forward to 2025 with them. So with that, I will entertain a motion.
Mr. Chair, I move the select board approve the 2025 liquor license renewals, as presented, contingent upon a final tax verification and receipt of all required paperwork and fees.
Second.
Motion in a second. Any further discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Abstain? That carries 5-0-0. Parcel naming. Sherburne Ave Recreation Parcel, 45 Sherburne Ave.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. I'm looking for the board to make my job and everybody else's job a little bit easier tonight. As you're aware, the town has invested nearly a million dollars to date with plans to invest an additional $500,000 more on the parcel of land that was donated to the town by Toll Brothers on what used to be the Tingsborough Country Club. This is, of course, where we've installed pickleball courts, tennis courts, basketball courts, et cetera. Over the course of the work, we have painfully been calling it, quote, "The Sherburne Road Open Space Parcel," which gets confusing, because it's also on Pataca Boulevard. It gets confused with the Sherburne, Nature Center. Thank you, Kat. I'm losing my mind. So for obvious reasons, we're looking to have the board formally name it so that we can order signage, create a page for it on our website, and give better instructions to folks who want to visit it. Throughout the course of the process, that the committee was coming up with the amenities, the name Ironwood was thrown around a few times. This, of course, incorporates its open space nature with the fact that it used to be a golf course. The board may consider soliciting feedback before formally designating a name. Just on that front, if that's the route the board chooses to go, I would just recommend that you identify two or three options and conduct sort of a non-binding community-wide poll. Certainly, I think we'd be embarking on a frivolous feat if we just asked people to give us their naming suggestions. So I will leave it at the board's discretion. It could choose to just name it the Ironwood Recreation Site, or Ironwood Park, or it could come up with a couple of options tonight. We can certainly do a survey over the next few weeks, soliciting feedback. I know that our rec director supports the Ironwood name. I think inadvertently, I think one of the bids that went out referred to it as Ironwood, so I'll defer to the board, but I'm hoping to eventually not have to call it the Sherburne Road Open Space Parcel.
Okay, open it up to the board. Mr. Cohane, I know that you've had a lot of connection with this and the committee and.
Yes. So the Sherburne Road, yeah, Open Space Committee, which did cause a lot of confusion. I agree. You know, the one, we really didn't talk about a name. I mean, we had a presentation that said Ironwood, but we never really had a deliberation at all during, during that committee meeting. You know, I know at the, I believe it was the CPC, they also mentioned that, you know, you know, Ironwood was the name that was, you know, that, it was in a presentation at one point. It was really all it was, and I guess it kind of took on a life of its own. I'm not in favor or against any particular name. I just think it would be good to start getting more input, since we really didn't even get input, you know, on the Sherburne Road Committee. We didn't really deliberate it at all. You know, I've only heard two names floated around. I've heard Ironwood, and I heard Ironside. Ironside being, of course, USS Constitution, why, as far as one. But the other aspect of that is, you know, the one, you know, the only discussion really was the Sherburne Committee, is it would be nice to have, it has, have something to do with golf, right? And irons being the irons, and we actually get half the, we got half the parcel, basically. Half of it went to, you know, condos, and half of it went to the recreation amenities that we're putting on here. I would prefer not to vote on it tonight. I'd prefer to get some, some input, you know, and see if anybody has any, you know. It might be people just like Ironwood, and that's it. It might, there might be no discussion, and there might be a lot of discussion. I don't know. But, you know, naming something is, once it's named, is named. So, you know, we'd like to get a little bit more input.
Thank you. Appreciate that. Select person Gilfus.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Thank you, select person Cohane, because I didn't have that context about the fact that really, even the people closest to it hadn't really deliberated it. I assumed that this was sort of like, the people who were closest to it chose this name, they love it, and we were just putting a seal on it. But knowing that there maybe hasn't been as much conversation about it, I think that probably does warrant some feedback. I don't want to open this up forever, and, you know, this isn't a decision by committee, but I think that that does make sense. I do like Ironwood Park more than whatever the other thing is that you said, Ironwood Recreation Parcel, something, I don't know what you said, Colin, but I didn't like it.
Me either.
No. I don't think anybody liked the Sherburne Road.
We should clear up what we're proposing, because that's not it. But, yeah, more feedback is probably a good idea.
Okay. Thank you. Mr. Schneider?
I'm also in favor of getting more feedback. I'm not crazy about the name Ironwood, but I will defer to whatever the townsfolk think is an appropriate name for that parcel.
People that feel strongly can feel strongly.
Exactly.
Mr. Merian?
I think if you say it with a Boston accent, you could have the Clubhouse Park.
There you go.
But I don't know if we come up with names tonight, or you get a couple of names from the community, but I don't want it to be 50 names, and all of a sudden, we have this faction, you know, like the movie Divergent or something. Like, oh my gosh, we're all factions fighting over a name. I have no bias towards the name, or for, against, or whatever. But, yeah, input'd be great. But I do like the Clubhouse Park.
Well, as, as someone who will be hitting both irons and woods into the water over the next couple of days, or next few days, on the golf course, I do like the golf course, you know, maintaining that and having something there. I don't know that Ironwood is something that jumps at me. I would encourage us to check with the Historical Commission. I'm sure there's more history to that parcel beyond just the golf course, and there may be something in there. I absolutely agree with the sentiment that we shouldn't vote on it tonight. I also agree, Colin, with, you know, identifying two or three and putting it out for a community-wide, non-binding poll. You know, I do think that there's, I don't think we're equipped to truly do a poll that's fair and unbiased online, but I think understanding where people are. So it might be that we check with a couple of the other committees. I think the CPC, Historical, I would like to get some feel for, for something. Is there a historical connotation that we could connect to in addition to the golf course, or in lieu of? I don't know. I don't have the answers to that. If I did, I would have had a suggestion. But I don't think we can make a decision. I think that the guidance that perhaps we can give is, perhaps we find out from some other groups, yes, I think that we should get down to a few names and then do a community-wide, non-binding poll, and then ultimately, it'd be up to us to vote on that and name it at that point. So for suggestions, what, if people have thoughts and suggestions, how would you like them to communicate those right now?
They can communicate it with my office directly. I think what it sounds like I'll do is check with the Historical Commission, and perhaps plan at your December 16th meeting to have four or five options. Maybe you Maybe you want me to include all four or five in the survey. Maybe you, at that meeting, narrow it down to two or three and then plan to run the survey so that we can formally vote at your January, your first January meeting.
That works for me. Does anybody have any concerns with that approach?
Great.
Do we want to give any extra weight to any particular stakeholders? The people from the committee that were involved, the rec department?
Uh, the only thing I would just point is that the shirt, the Open Space Committee has been, it dissolved, its charter expired, so convening it would be problematic. Um, what I will do, though, is I will check with the Historical Commission. I will check, I mean, I've already spoken to our rec director, so I've got that, but I will identify when I propose four or five names, where they came from, so you can use that in your deliberations.
Does that work for everybody?
Yeah.
You have what you need, Colin?
Absolutely, thank you.
Excellent, all right. Um, requests, yeah, request for comment, Planning Board, three fifty-two Middlesex Road.
The Planning Board is requesting comments on the attached application for a modification to an existing special permit to construct an additional building on-site. Your packet includes details on the application. The Planning Board will hold a public hearing on December fifth, two thousand twenty-four. The Board typically does not make comments on this, um, type of matter and allows the Planning Board to have the ability to do their own diligence.
Um, does anybody feel like that, that, that we should make comment on this?
Who is requesting our comment?
The Planning Board.
The Board asks for multiple comments from different groups, and we typically do not comment.
I think you've only seen...
They're not actually expecting a comment. They're just, they requested as...
Right.
Procedural.
In my four years, it would be very unusual for us to comment. Now, the question is, do we, do you, do you want us to vote to not make comment or do we just not make comment?
If, if you don't have anything to say, you don't have to vote.
No comment. If, if there's nobody making a motion, then we don't have to do anything and we move to the next item. Does that work for everyone?
Rental Associates Realty Trust is also my landlord, so I'm happy to not comment on it.
(laughing). Okay, let's go to five E, Letter of Support to Governor Healy Regarding Six Hundred Thousand Dollar Earmark for DPW Building.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. This is a draft letter that, assuming you're okay with, I'll also ask the Sewer Commission to sign off on. I mentioned at a previous meeting that in the Act Relative to Strengthening Massachusetts Economic Leadership, the Economic Bond Bill, which was passed by the legislature a few weeks ago and signed by Governor Healy, Senator Kennedy was able, as a part of that bond authorization, to include six hundred thousand dollars for our DPW building. Unfortunately, the way bond authorizations work is that money isn't automatically coming to us. So the legislature says, hey, governor, you can borrow up to three point nine million dollars. It's much more than that, but three point nine million dollars for a specific set of items. The governor, then, throughout the course of the remaining months of the fiscal year, can choose to release some, all, or none of that. So now, because it's included in there, we have to essentially lobby on our own behalf to get the governor to release it. I will say that this six hundred thousand dollars will go a heck of a long way to us potentially even completing a new DPW building. Um, we have the money in place on our end through capital, um, and the earmark that we got for the design, as well as the contribution for the Sewer Commission matching their portion of the building to get the shell of the building largely installed. What we didn't have was the money to complete it. Um, so this money is not just a nice tab, this would be critical to us completing it. I think that we have a very unique case here because it is kind of the capstone on a large economic development project that was funded by a MassWorks grant. So all I'm looking for tonight is the board to vote to approve this letter of support and then we'll print a hard copy, get your signatures. We'll mail this to the governor with a letter from the Sewer Commission. I've also asked Representative Gary, Senator Kennedy, and Representative Trehan's office to provide similar letters. Um, and we'll just stay on top of it. At this point, the governor hasn't indicated what her plans are for any of that bond authorization, and I don't expect that she will anytime between now and the holidays, but I certainly expect that, once January one hits, we'll be one of dozens of different municipalities and state agencies lobbying for some release, so I'd rather just get ahead of it.
Thank you for the explanation. I will open it up to the board. Mr. Moran?
That's a great idea, I support it.
Mr. Schneider?
Yeah, no, I like the, uh, I think the letter is, is, is well-written and also, um, I like the fact that we're trying to get out in front of this early before the, the crowd go all in favor of it.
Select person Gilfus.
Yeah, I definitely share both of those sentiments. I'm curious, if we don't get that six hundred thousand, what happens to the project?
So we'll still move forward with constructing the shell of the building. Um, I think, you know, when we, a few years ago now contemplated this as a capital request, our plan was always to start with the shell and then, as we were able to construct the inside. What we need most right now is the garage space, which doesn't require much other than the shell. Um, all of our staff that would move into offices in there already have office space. The one consideration would be that the Sewer Department obviously is looking to get out of the rental lease that they have, and so we'd have to make some sort of a office accommodation in one of the garage bays. That's doable. If we don't get the six hundred thousand, we're just probably waiting another few years to finish the build-out through a capital request, I would imagine.
Yeah, so hopefully we get that. Thanks.
Select person Cohane?
Yeah, um, where to start on this? Yeah, so between the Sewer Department and the, the Highway Department at the time, you know, they, they definitely needed space to store their equipment. You know, as we went through that, we, you know, as Colin said, we, we worked with the state and the contractor. Uh, we got, we got some good, uh, you know, some good money from the, uh, from, from both. We got the grant and then we also, the developer's gonna put sewer and water to both buildings. Um, so we, we tried to cover all that and as we were doing all of that, we had this, we had this great big building that we're gonna house everything and I asked Matt, like, why don't you just do, you know, do a little bump out there? So, you know, in the future, maybe we could really make that the DPW building. So that's how it kinda came about and, as Colin said, the plan always was, it was really, you know, store all the equipment. We gotta do that, uh, but it was that bump out for the future that hopefully we could, you know, make that into offices and make that really the DPW building. Um, and then Senator Kennedy, again, thank you. Again, Senator Kennedy, uh, you know, he's really good at asking, you know, what are some of the things you may need? And Colin, of course, said, wow, it'd be great if you, uh, we could finish off this DPW building and I, and I like his thought process. You know, we already have a grant associated with that. They're already, they're extending the, uh, the park and ride, the number of spaces there, so it just kind of seems to fit together. So, you know, hopefully, uh, this goes through and, uh, good work on writing the letter and getting ahead of it.
Yeah, I wholeheartedly support, um, as someone who does not like to sign myself to a lot of things on these. I absolutely, uh, will welcome the opportunity to sign this. I think it's, it is a, um, a great project in a variety of different areas, from an economic development standpoint, from municipal services standpoint, um, from a funding standpoint and being creative. Um, the, even the, the garage itself, the shell of the building that we have on there, um, a different approach to some things. So, um, it would be, it would be fitting if we could get this, um, just because the, the residents of town deserve this building now, rather than waiting a few years. And, um, you know, I think that there's just, there, there's been a bunch of really good things that come together. The state needs to come through, um, and, and utilize our tax money appropriately. So I support this wholeheartedly. Um, thank you for pulling together the, the, the letter and I'm glad I remembered to make sure that we put it on the agenda.
Yes, you did catch that, thank you, Mr. Chair.
So with that, um, do you need a motion for us?
Yeah, I'll just take a motion to endorse the letter as written.
As moved. Seconded.
Motion and a second, any further discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed, abstain, that carries five zero zero. We already did five F, which brings us down to select board reports. Mr. Moran, you wanna kick us off?
Uh, no, just, uh, yeah, happy Thanksgiving. I know it's after it, but I missed the last meeting, so wishing everybody happy and safe holiday season upcoming.
Mr. Schneider?
Um, I know you mentioned it in your report, Colin, about the Festival of Trees. Um, as a, um, visitor of the Festival of Trees this weekend, it was amazing to see the number of people that were out there. Um, equally amazing to see the number of young families and, and a shout-out to everyone who's involved in that program. They give, um, people of the town just a, an avenue to, you know, some, some, some free entertainment that they can come to and, and share and, and gather. And it was, I think it was just a great environment.
Thank you. Select per, select person Gilfus.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Um, yeah, the Festival of Trees is so beautiful. Like, driving through town at night and seeing the lights and seeing people, I don't know, bundled up and be enthusiastic and be happy about, you know, being together. I just, I love this time of year. I'm really, really grateful that the town does such a good job putting this together and, um, I hope that people get out and enjoy it, 'cause it's really beautiful. That's it.
Thank you.
I also attended Festival of Trees, uh, with my, uh, with my family and some, a couple interesting little tidbits. My, uh, my son's girlfriend, uh, as we were driving through town, just said, this is like one of the most beautiful towns. Uh, so it got somebody else's opinion on that. And then she also mentioned, she goes, oh, what's that church? It's like, did they ever open that? So it's just, she goes, oh, I'd like to see what's in there. So we got a chance, I got a chance to show her the First Parish Meeting House, uh, also. So it was a great event, um, you know, allows everybody to get into the Christmas spirit. Um, you know, a lot of families, of course, out there. And as, when I talk to many of the people, uh, that pretty much put on this event, uh, I hear the same thing from them over and over again. This is a labor of love. Uh, they do this 'cause they enjoy it, they wanna put this, uh, on for the community, and it really is a labor of love.
Hard to top any of those, um, but to echo that and add, um, so, uh, I went through during a time when it wasn't as busy. I would encourage people to try to go through there. There are lots of little, um, nooks and, and little things, the attention to detail. Um, you know, the, the areas where the, um, the reindeer, you know, you, you gotta walk along these areas. There are three buildings that are, um, so well-decorated and, um, really just fantastic. Go there during the day, um, go there at night, you can go there multiple times. Be patient, um, 'cause, you know, there are logistics. Um, as you're driving through the area, please be careful because there are little kids that are, um, you know, there, there are plenty of children, there are people there. Be considerate of the pedestrians.
They're hopped up on hot cocoa.
Yeah, it's, it's, it's also cold, so they're trying, you're in the warm car, they're in the cold. So, um, be patient, it is that holiday season, so, uh, have the holiday spirit. It is a fantastic event. I encourage everybody to, um, take advantage of it. Um, so I really have nothing else to add beyond what you folks had said, other than that. And with that, I will entertain a motion to go into executive session.
So Chair, whether we go into executive session under exemption three to discuss strategy with respect to collective bargaining or litigation if an open meeting may have a detrimental effect on the bargaining position of the public body and the chair so declares. Vesper Country Club versus Stonehedge Condominium Trust and Town of Tingsboro Sewer Commission.
Second.
I have a motion and a second, any further discussion? Let's do a roll call vote.
I am in favor.
In favor.
In favor.
In favor.
I am also in favor for the folks, uh, paying attention. Our next meeting, December sixteenth, twenty twenty-four, and then January, somewhere in January after that. Have a great evening, thank you, everyone.
Thank you, everybody. Have a good night.